Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Rockland School Committee meeting of Monday, September 11th, 2017. First on tonight's agenda is acceptance of minutes. However, we will be unable to vote on that tonight with having not having a quorum I will need to abstain.
Motion to table.
Motion to table. Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a vote. We'll table that. Next, under item F, we're going to move to the next item on the agenda. We are going to introduce our new student representative, Ms. Macy Jones. Macy, we want to welcome you. We really enjoy having a student representative here. Last year was our first year having a regular student representative. We had Shannon Lindahl, and it proved to be, I think, very successful for us as a committee, and I think for Shannon and for the student body to have some representation here. So, we're really glad to have you, if I may say, on behalf of these two other guys here and the rest of the committee who was not here tonight. We want to welcome you, and we want you to feel very comfortable here at our meetings to be able to take part and ask questions, should you have any. I had the opportunity to sit down with Macy for a little bit this morning, just to talk about her role as student representative. I think she's kind of excited about it, I hope as excited as we are to have you. She's going to give us an update at the end of the agenda from now on when she's here on Monday nights to have anything that she wants to bring to our attention from the student body or ask any questions of us that may be upon us. So Macy, is there anything that you want to say? Do you want to say a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Well, I'm a senior this year. I'm treasurer of the Rockland High SGC, and it's time for colleges this year, so this is a good thing to have on my resume, and I'm happy to be here, so thank you for having me.
Fantastic. What college are you looking at?
I'm looking at Nichols College, Roger Williams, UMass Boston.
What's your favorite subject?
Subjects.
I like history a lot, and then math's becoming an up-and-coming.
Okay. Good. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Very good.
Go to Roger Williams, it's beautiful there.
It's gorgeous there.
Yeah. Probably this is fun.
Next, under communications, we've got a couple of items for flyer distributions. Dr. Cron, do you have recommendations on these flyers?
I recommend we accept these two flyers. The mattress fundraiser for the music department, incredible fundraiser, very, very profitable. Everybody needs mattresses. And the youth basketball flyer, I recommend that as well.
I remember the mattress fundraiser as being extremely successful last time.
Over 5,000.
Yeah.
That's surprising.
And it's happening. I mean, it happens in where I live as well. You know, King Philip does it.
I know they're doing it at Boschville, too.
There must be a lot of profit in mattresses.
Absolutely.
That's brilliant.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they're making their own.
So we have a motion in a second for approval. Do all those in favor approve these? Aye. That's a vote. Thank you very much. Next up, under audience, item three, we have some middle school students here with us, Olivia Jones and Joshua McGivney for the Massachusetts Maritime Academy Advanced Studies and Leadership Summer Program.
We're actually here to sell you mattresses for half-price.
There we go.
Half a mattress?
They can wheel and deal these two. So thanks for having us. I'm thrilled to bring up Josh and Olivia, who are representatives this summer at the Mass Maritime Program, which really takes our best and brightest and brings them together with kids from so many other districts to do just wonderful, amazing things, and we couldn't have two better representatives for us. So, I'd like to present the two of them to you for any questions you might have and to receive some recognition.
And you're there, you're there for four weeks, right?
Uh, three weeks.
For three weeks. Five days a week.
Mm-hmm.
And what was the best part, other than being, you slept away, right? So being away from home is probably super fun.
I took engineering class there.
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun, because that's what I want to do when I'm older.
Excellent.
I also liked hanging out with a lot of new people. There's a lot of group activities that we got to do, which was fun.
And you're close to the ocean, so you get to do all kinds of ocean things.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
What did you like?
Bungee jumping, or no, not bungee, like getting into the gummy suits and jumping into the canal.
You jumped into the canal?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
And they had a rope tied around you, I hope?
Nope.
Oh, boy. All right. Sounds great. That's canal, the currents in that canal.
They were probably trolling for shark.
Shark, yeah. He was wearing a gummy suit, so maybe it was candy fishing.
I think we're talking about that now and not before.
Yeah.
Describe the gummy suit. It's waterproof, yeah, it's waterproof, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually it has some air insulation in it.
Yeah, it's hard to move, but...
How do you say, gummy suit?
You look like a gummy bear.
Yeah.
Right? Especially after you fall in the water.
Yeah.
I want to thank you guys for all of the effort that you put in to put you in a position so that you could go down to the Mass Maritime. It's always great to meet the best of our best, and you guys are what we're all about. We can have football teams, and we can have bands, and we can do all these other things, which are all wonderful, but you guys are what it's all about. Getting through here with a great education and going off to school if you can, so I just want to thank you.
Absolutely, and it makes us all feel good. You know, we know we have some great people going off to represent our great little town, and so keep up representing Rockland in the great way that you have, and best of luck to you. That's fantastic.
So Josh, the only thing you liked is jumping into the canal, huh?
Like, some of the friendships that I made, and some of the stuff we learned, like chemistry and what makes a bridge sturdy, stuff.
It's pretty neat. We're sending more and more students to Maritime Academy, and they come out and they go right to work, very profitably.
Very, yeah, right. Great jobs. Great jobs, absolutely.
It is a good job.
I think it's great.
Fine job.
I'd like to present, on behalf of the Rockland Public Schools, to Olivia Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you, certificate of appreciation, and to Joshua McGivney. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture? You want a picture? I know we're on TV, but we can edit this later, so, right Dave? Do you want a picture? I want a picture.
Get away from the microphone.
Those are the ones that count, right there, those pictures.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll just stand up here.
Congratulations to you both.
What did I do?
Oh, that's your sister.
I wondered, I wondered about that.
Congratulations to you both.
To each other.
Fantastic, that's great. Good night, great night for your family. Your parents should be proud of you both.
I lost the clicker between...
I can't help you with that.
Yeah, I had it. Beth, you didn't take it, did you?
I dropped my hat.
No, I really, I brought it with me.
Yeah.
It was in my pocket.
Which pocket? Is it in that right pocket?
No.
Or I can just advantage one for you.
That would be awesome, since there's something very odd going on. Okay. So, I'd like to give a...
Check his gummy suit.
The gummy suit? Yeah, it stuck to it. So I'd like to just give an opening school report, and I'm going to key in on just a couple of things. Enrollment, elementary building project, and busing, just to give a few big things that are going on and some things that we've heard from the community that they want to know about. So, our enrollment as of today, this is our current enrollment, we have nine kindergarten classes, we're averaging 18 per kindergarten class, which is excellent class sizes, and this will make more sense as I go forward, but remember that number, 2,235, because that does not include out-of-district or preschool. So, one of the things, there was an article that came out just recently, and it was about dips in enrollment, so I wanted to just make sure that I explained a little bit about what that enrollment was. So they list us from 2001 to 2016 as being, you know, having a 20% reduction in enrollment, which is accurate, but if you go back to 2001, it's a little, it's a bit much. So, what I'd like to show is, that's our trend leading up to 2017, but we have data suggesting our enrollment forecasts increasing through 2025, '26. That data comes from some work that the MSBA is doing with us, so it's DESI, Department of Education data, as well as the way the MSBA takes it, and we use that information to determine the size of our buildings going forward. So I just wanted to be, give a little more perspective. If you saw the numbers back in 2001, yes, we were way down and there was a drop, but we've been steadily working our way back up, and our enrollment is, I'd say it's on par to stay where it is, maybe drop down a little bit, but I expect it to be coming back up in the next, in the next few years. So I also wanted to key in on English language learner enrollment trends. We talked about this last year at this time. We currently now have 114 English language learners in the district. That's as of last week. When you cross that 100-student mark, you then become eligible for Title III, but they use the numbers from the previous year, so we're still not there. But our English language learner numbers are growing, and especially in the elementary.
We have to watch that very, very carefully, Doctor. One thing I've heard from the community, there are a lot of people, for whatever reasons they may have, that are thrilled with the numbers that we have, so we've got to be sure that we are handling it in the best possible way that we can so that it doesn't infringe on some of the other kids that already do speak English, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right. We currently have four full-time English language learner teachers. We added one this...
We added one this year, right?
We added one.
Yeah.
But our numbers are such now that between the requirements by the Department of Education and what's practical as far as delivering instruction effectively, we're looking at adding yet another EL teacher.
Perhaps we should be more public with that, that we have got our arms around that. We know what's happening, we're aware of what's happening in the classrooms, and we are putting money, our people actually, towards that, so that people aren't adversely affected.
Absolutely. Well, I also think that English language learners as a discipline, so to speak, is still relatively new to the Department of Education, so policy is a little slow in coming, and it tends to be designed, I think, for large urban areas, Boston, which is very typical. It's not a, anyone, but I think they're still trying to figure out how to handle it. It's a challenge. So, in some ways, our challenge is much easier than other communities in that the vast majority of ours are speaking Portuguese, and so that helps us design services.
True, true.
But I would imagine Mr. Mills could tell you, in his, in his school, he may have 10 different languages being taught.
Yeah, no doubt, but probably 60% of enrollment is ELLs, yeah.
It's rather remarkable, though, that in a three-year period of time, that that number doubled. So it's changing, it's just a different environment. We have to meet the needs of the ELL students and their families, as well as, as Dick just referenced, make sure that the children who are, you know, English language students, that they don't suffer due to the adjusting that we do have to do. Just something we have to keep, certainly keep our eye on, for sure.
And I personally welcome them. I think it's great for them to be in this community, and we saw last spring evidence of what a wonderful job is being done with these people that are coming to our country, many of them on their own, without even parents, and they're coming over here and they're doing really well.
And they enrich our school culture.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they do, and I think the community also needs to know, you know, a year ago, we went back and looked, took a very, very critical look at our enrollment policies and our procedures, and we centralized registration. We have to respect the fact that we're spending taxpayer money, and so we have to follow those procedures, and establishing residency means someone who owns the property in Rockland must, must go to Town Hall and say, yes, this person rents from me, yes, I will, I will put my name on this paper.
Again, make it well-known, because I had a mother come to me with that very question, very question. How careful are they? And I said, well, very, and we've become more stringent, actually, than we ever were before.
Yeah.
But people don't know this, and all those questions are out in the community, and if they don't care to come up to me, or Mr. Biggins, or Mr. Mills, or yourself, then rumors grow, and rumors grow.
Well, then, it's loaded, too. I mean, people, people want to ask the questions, and they should, but it's tough to ask those questions without feeling like you're being off-putting, or you could offend someone, and that's not what we're trying to do. The fact is, there's only so much money to do our job, and we need to be sure that we're spending it on our Rockland folks, so...
Spot on.
Any of those numbers, are they, any immersion going on in those numbers there?
Well, it depends on...
Are they just all ELL? Are they...
Depends on the level, right? So...
You get level one, two, three, and four?
Right. So, at the elementary, right now, it's like a pull-out, push-in model, so the ELL students will be taken out, they'll do some work, then they'll come back into the classroom, but we're still working on making that feel fluid, so it's sort of, it's just a big adjustment for classroom teachers. It's a lot of work, and it's a new skill. It's sort of like becoming better at working with students with specific learning disabilities. This isn't a learning disability, this is, the foundation of communication is, you know, but I've seen some remarkable, we've seen some students just, especially the younger they are, I think the immersion in the classroom, they learn so quickly.
Right.
And we do have a very bright English language learner staff, so we're fortunate.
How about, you know, at home? Do they practice at home? Is that part of the requirement for them?
Well, I think...
I know that's difficult.
It is. I think, I really can't speak to parental involvement on that. I can picture the 15 different families or cases that, you know, we've talked about together, I've worked with different principals on, and I think you're going, you're everywhere from someone who's caring for their children and maybe another child, and trying to just, trying to just make it, make it all work, so...
How about when, if parents or guardians come up to the school? Do we have people to...
So, we're lucky, we have Nea Callahan, who last year, we added some duties for her, and the duties were, she's really a translator for us. She's a liaison, so when someone who comes in and needs language assistance, they make an appointment, Nea meets with them and helps them fill out paperwork, answers questions, so that we make sure that we're asking the right questions in the right language, and we're getting the information. So we're very lucky, because it's, it's hard to find people like Nea.
And the last, talking about paperwork, do we supply the paperwork to them in their native tongue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that covers that, that, that's a requirement of...
Right, and when we, so every time I send out an alert now, or not an alert now, a connect ed.
Right.
I send a duplicate copy to Nea and ask her to translate for the phone, so she'll send home a phone version, and she'll send home the email version. So students who are English language learners will get, will get it twice. They'll get it in English, and they'll get it in Portuguese.
All right, so you're separating, you're only doing that outgoing call to the English language.
Yeah, outgoing calls, outgoing texts, outgoing emails.
Okay.
Or report cards, any mailings.
Directed right to those, that, those constituents. Okay, that's good.
Yeah. Well, we work, you know, we're working at it. It's not, we don't have a, it's not an option.
No.
So, but the translating software, we were talking about it today, is still not even close to being helpful, so we really rely on, we rely a lot on Nea Callahan. She's been very helpful.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
So I wanted to just break it out a little more for you, so you could see where they are. I think 28 students at Esten becomes almost its own class, so we're looking at, you know, where do we go? Where do we go, and how do we restructure what we're doing? I'm personally not convinced that the pull-out method is going to help, is going to help the kids as much as if we could find more of a hybrid, so they're in the classroom more, because I know for the teachers, it's a challenge when the student comes out of the classroom for help, and then when they come back in, they feel like they've missed something, because they have. So, it's, it becomes uncomfortable for the student who's coming out, and it becomes an additional challenge for the teacher. So, we have four, again, four EL teacher, ELL teachers in five schools, so that becomes tough. It was even tougher with only three, but as the numbers are getting where they are, if we have five, we can go building-based, and that will be much more effective. So as much as we hold off hiring as much as we can, we're getting, we're getting really close.
Like you say, we don't have a choice.
No.
We've got to do it.
We do.
And that makes a lot of sense to me, to have one in each, each building.
Just makes servicing, and it'll be better for the teachers, because then that, that teacher can be a resource to all the teachers. Sort of like a special education teacher is extremely helpful to classroom teachers when they share students, because they can have conversations. I think it gives the teachers insight that they can't have without having a, you know, a resource in their school, so...
Good. And it becomes interesting, too, is that, and I see this develop in our school, is that you have English speakers, and, you know, we have, we have large Haitian Creole contingents, and what happens is that they get mixed cultures, and they start talking, you know, they start understanding each other, you know, in English, and then instead they start talking Creole, and then they start talking, you know, they, you know, sometimes that's good for, you know, to be exposed to that type of stuff, yeah. You know, they call me something sometimes, and I understand what they say.
Hey, look what I found. Okay. So, I want to just update everyone on the building project. So, it did, it didn't sleep during the summer, it kept going. So what happened during, during the summer? We established the elementary building committee by vote of the selectmen back in July, in May. Then we had two reports that were due in July, the educational profile questionnaire and the online enrollment report, and both were accepted by MSBA. The next step, on Thursday, we're holding a conference call meeting with the MSBA to look at the enrollment projection data and have conversations about how that may affect our feasibility study agreement. It's basically laying out the parameters, so what happens after that? Once they've completed our feasibility study agreement, then we have, then we put out to hire an owner's project manager, and the first job is to hire the architect. Six to eight weeks from the time we hire the owner's project manager is about how long we anticipate it taking to hire an architect.
Is there a meeting of the committee yet?
No, the first meeting is, is coming up on, I want to say, 21st.
Yeah.
So the first meeting of the building committee is on the 21st. What happens once we hire the architect? Then we design, you know, we look at all options for location, structure, layouts, the whole nine yards. So all the information that's going into that feasibility study agreement will be used in, you know, with the architect and MSBA to do the final design.
And the committee will be, you know, interviewing some of the OPM and the architect.
Absolutely. The building committee will be involved in interviewing the owner's project manager, as well as the architect.
Will the committee share their minutes with this committee?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we're holding the meetings in the lower conference room at Town Hall, so that they can be, it can be televised, or at least audio. We want this to be as transparent as possible. We want all the questions that are out there to come to us, so that we know what questions are out there, so we can help to provide information. There's not, I'm, I don't want it ever, I don't want people to feel like they're being sold anything, I just want them to have the information.
And not only transparency, I think, but to, I mean, very much include the community, the community in this project. It's a community-driven project. I think our, a great majority of our town, maybe not a great majority, but a great amount of our town understands very much the need that we have for a school building project. So I just think that, you know, the more people we involve, the more people we bring under the tent is, is better for all of us in this endeavor we have going forward here.
Absolutely.
And I also think, too, is that if the community does have a question, get it to either the school committee or the school department.
Right.
Or to the school building committee, and, you know, you know, and, you know, you can put it out on Facebook, too, but please get it to us.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, so, who's on the building committee? So, I just wanted to point this out, so our first meeting, September 21st, at 6:00 PM, and our plan is to meet monthly to begin, because there isn't a whole lot for the committee to do until we, you know, get the architect and get the OPM and start to do that, but on the third Thursday of each month at 6 o'clock in the lower conference room over at Town Hall, and I just laid out the committee. So I think it's, it's important for folks to see, we have a mix of parents, we have capital planning committee members, we have our at-large members, we have our director facilities, we have a realtor and resident on the committee, and we have two members of the finance committee, as well as Jared Valenzola, who was on the permanent building committee, and also on the, the school building committee previously. So I feel that we've put together a good, a good mix of folks for this committee, and I'm hoping that, as Mr. Mills alluded to, it gives everyone sort of someone they feel comfortable going to if they have a question. And those meetings for the public, those are public meetings, you're welcome to come to any one of those meetings.
Right.
And they're, they're posted ahead of time. Busing. So, there were some questions about busing over the summer, there always are, because it's a challenge, and so I thought that it would be a good idea for me, one, to learn about busing, and then, two, be able to share with the public a little bit about the process and with the committee about busing, because I think there's just a general lack of understanding. No fault of anyone's, but I think you may find this interesting. So, we have a contract with First Student for our buses. It's a three-year contract, and every three years, we go out to bid. For the last two, last two cycles, First Student was the only company to actually submit a bid. We had other companies pull information as though they were going to make a bid, but they never actually put out, put out a bid. So First Student has been our company and is our company currently.
Would you say that that's a trend that happens with other districts as well, that First Student tends to be the only bidder?
First Student is the only bidder in our region. There's similar borderline monopolies happening in other parts of the state. It's something that the state's been looking into. I doubt they'll get to it before I'm even grayer than I am. So, I just think it's a business that, that they have trouble making money unless they can do it in a large...
It's funny, though, that in some of the towns where there is a school bus contractor, an independent, they usually wind up, and it's a bidding process, they wind up with a contract, and quite frankly, service is better than First Student in most cases. You see, was it Lucini, you see Ingalls, you see all these small operations who do a great job. It's too bad that they get beat up a little bit by the big brother.
Yeah, I suspect they do, but, so, so our contract this year is $612,000 for nine buses, nearly $613,000. We run, our buses, we have, we do, it's called runs, so three runs. One elementary run, a kindergarten run, and a middle school, high school run. So nine buses, and we supply one bus to Holy Family, which is required by statute, and we run one late bus in the afternoon for middle and high school students. I'm going to post this PowerPoint for anyone who's at home watching TV, trying to take notes, so if anyone wants to review this later, it'll be posted. State law mandates busing for students grades K through six if they live more than two miles away. The Rockland policy states that students in K to four, who live more than one and a half miles, can, can get busing, and students in grades five through eight can get busing if they live more than two miles from their school. Neither state law nor Rockland policy gives any entitlement for busing to high school students. I just wanted to point that out. So, here's, here's the rub. Here's, here's where it gets challenging for people. So if a bus isn't full, then the empty seats we sell to those who live, you know, within the two-mile limit who would like to take a bus, and there are never enough of these seats. So, and for, and for the most part, it seems like, well, if it's full, add another bus. It seems logical, but it's economically impossible. Well, it's not, it is economically impossible.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So...
I don't think most people realize, a bus costs $60,000, $70,000.
$68,074, actually, yeah.
And not to, and not to, to your previous bullet point.
Yeah.
About, about state not mandating bussing for high school students. I think that we should point out that in Rockland, we are fortunate that we do have bussing for our students. We make that a priority. And there are at least one, maybe more surrounding communities that do not offer bussing to their high school students at all.
Correct.
So, and we are fortunate in, in that way. And I know that kids' transportation to school is, safe transportation to school is obviously a huge, huge, if not the primary important thing that a parent thinks of, you know, the first day of school. So that's not lost on any of us.
Right.
But I just want to point out that I think that we are fortunate for what we do have in a lot of ways in Rockland.
And we get the best, or the most out of our transportation dollar too. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we bid, this goes out to bid, without new buses. So that we get buses up to 10 years old.
We get older buses.
And I don't have a problem with that because I know how they're inspected. And an older bus is inspected just as thoroughly, if not more so, by the registry of motor vehicles every so often, more so probably than the new buses are.
And we can receive those reports anytime we ask.
So I, so therefore, we, we're able to get more transportation out of the same dollar because we're not, our kids aren't riding around in these brand-new buses that you see in other communities.
Correct.
That I know, that these communities are paying a lot more for their transportation than we are.
Correct.
But we're still getting a lot of bang for our buck.
Correct, yeah. Just to reiterate, I think, so the public understands, when you go out for a bus contract, you can say, no, I want new buses, but you pay more.
That's right. Exactly. That's my point.
I know you just said that, but I felt, I think it's something to say again because I, I think we, we save money wherever we can.
Absolutely.
Because we take our responsibility seriously with.
And we're not doing it so that we can reduce the number of buses. We're doing it so that we can keep the same number.
So we can do more.
If not more. That's right.
More, right.
In fact, you know, Ms. Forlizzi and Ms. Penny do, and, and Mrs. Lamb do the majority of the work with this. And there's a lot, it's all, it's all people, people, person to person. So I'm hoping that this information is helpful to parents, but it's still not going to help if they don't have, you know, they're still frustrated and I understand that.
And the mileage, you say over two miles. How do you determine that?
How far it is from there?
Yeah, how far?
I would, I would say MapQuest or...
We have maps.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so somebody's on the, right on the two-mile, you know, they qualify, when do they qualify?
Their front door is on the two-mile line.
Right.
No, I, I.
The address, right?
Yeah, I don't know. Have we had, can you think of any, are we that tight on the streets?
We've had some questions.
There are cases where you drive it, right? You get out your power and you drive it.
We have to look at.
Well, that's the next question I have. Is it actually driving or is it walking? Because you can go Google Map, you can do Google, and you can put the walking person
Right.
And you can find a shot out way to get from that person than driving. Because sometimes you go through, you know, you might go to, you have to go down a one-way street.
Right.
Take a right and again go down, you know, turn around. And walking, you don't have to worry about one-way streets.
I would suspect sidewalks would come into, into play too.
If.
You want them to be walking on sidewalks.
If we had sidewalks.
Well, you and I don't, but that's another story for another day.
We won't go there.
No.
But just to point out the economics of the buses, so $68,074 per bus. If we filled the bus, that's 55 kids, and every single kid on that bus was paying $275, which is not the case on any of our buses, the revenue generated is only $15,125. So we're operating at a loss. Nine buses times $52,949. So we're not a for-profit, right? But we are, our school budget is essentially subsidizing the transportation. It's part of our budget, but it's very, it's expensive. So adding, and adding one bus does not solve the problem because it's, it's regional and it's, you know, where the bus goes and being able to set up the runs. And you can't rip the whole thing down and start over again in the middle of the year either. So it's, it's a complex process, but the, in the end, we're trying, we have always as a district, we've erred on the side of, of caution and bust more than we have to because we understand, especially our young kids, we don't want them crossing busy streets. We don't want them walking long distances. And most importantly, we don't want them not coming to school because they're so far away. That comes into play with our high school kids. So we're, we're trying to get the most out of what we have. So we've developed a sophisticated procedure to ensure eligible students get first spots. And I'll kind of walk you through this. So the first thing is, in June, a letter goes out so that students who are outside of that, well, everyone gets the letter, but students who are eligible, they're outside of the two-mile, they can inform the district if they're going to use the service. Parents outside the distance limit, I should say within, I, I think you know what I mean. If they want to pay for a spot, then they get put on a list saying, when, when we have open spots, you'll get it. And younger students are prioritized. So by the beginning of the summer, a list of bus riders.
Quick question.
Yeah, sure.
So the, the first one, that the list of the letters go out in June so that eligible parents, so are the letters going out to only eligible parents?
No.
Or they go out to district-wide?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and it, in the letter, it outlines, you know, if you're within this, this is your, if you're outside of this. So it allows parents to either, you know, identify, I'm outside of two miles, I want a spot, boom. Then it's, then, then we have it.
Okay.
And if they're, if they're within and they want it, like one and a half miles and they'd still like bussing, which makes sense, and they want to pay in that case, then they let us know as well.
And it's all checked. So when they send it back and they say, I'm outside the two miles, we check something that says they are outside the two miles.
Yes, yeah.
However, if they are outside the two miles and they do want to pay, that does not guarantee their ability to ride on a route either, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Correct. So by the beginning of the summer, we send the list of riders to the bus company. They use a, a program called Versitran. It's pretty much the industry standard. And they, they help design routes. And then the routes come back to our office and we look at them and say, no, that, that's not going to work, or that might work. And there's a whole lot of negotiating that goes on there. By late summer, parents receive letters to come in and pick up their bus pass. The school year begins invariably with a waiting list of 30 to 50 kids who are within that two-mile range who want bussing that we can't provide. So what happens is, the first two weeks of school, we have the drivers actually do physical counts on each bus, nine buses. We're seeing consistently, these children aren't here. We call those homes and say, are you going to use the bus or not? If you don't want to use it, we, we want to get somebody else on the bus. So again, it's very work, it's very work and labor intensive. It's like phone call after phone call after phone call and list. And Ms. Penny is, is really incredible. She's there early in the morning and late at night trying to make all this happen. So she deserves a lot of, a lot of credit. And so we spend $612,667 from the operational budget. And if we reduced our scope and we didn't bust, you know, beyond the, the 1.5 miles and so on, we could reduce our operating budget. But I think Rockland streets and traffic, we've, we're, again, we're committed to keeping the kids safe. So any, any increase in that budget line has to come away from something else, teachers or instructional needs. So I'm hoping that that, the information is a little helpful to the public so that they understand how bussing, you know, how it works and how much they, how much it costs and, and how complicated it is. But at the same time, please come in, ask your questions. We'll, you know, Ms. Penny will help you. We'll try to get you on a bus. I know that Ms. Forlizzi and Ms. Miniglia have been extremely creative over the past year or so, moving, moving people to vans and renting our own vans and hiring our own drivers to save money. So we're, we're always reassessing how efficient we are with the use of bus money, transportation. And so I, I just, I hope that this is a little bit helpful.
Again, coming to talk to you.
Yeah.
The best thing to register early, have parents register soon is they can, first thing over the summer.
Right.
To register for a bus.
Right.
Do you find that there's a lot of late folks coming in with the bus passes? And I'm sure that that causes challenges and drawing up routes.
That causes many, many challenges. The biggest thing is common during the summer to register.
What, what happens when you get new students?
Well, see, we have, there's some, there's some issues with, with everyone's bus system.
Right.
Because if someone, let's say someone moves in over the summer and they're, and they're outside of two miles, we have to move heaven and earth to try to find, find them something, right? Especially if they're, if they're younger. But sometimes what you'll have is a kid who purchased a bus seat who's only a half mile away. And now you don't have that bus seat for the kid who really needs it.
Right.
So I think there's things that we could talk about, exploring that might actually even make it a little more efficient. Like, maybe we decide that kids who are a half mile from school can walk. Maybe that opens up 10 seats to those kids who live further out. Or maybe we keep five, but there are different, different things that we can look at that might make it a little more efficient. But the bottom line is, if you don't have a bus seat and you want one, come in, we're going to work with you and do everything we can to get you on a bus.
Yeah.
Okay?
You're good.
And that's it.
That's a lot.
I know, I know. I'm here, I'm sorry.
Thank you, that was good.
Hearing my own voice too.
I think the moral of the story too is communication. And I think I, I really appreciate you taking the time to talk to us about bussing because I know it was a concern. Yeah, it doesn't take much to sign onto social media and see something as a concern in our community sometimes. I think sometimes that's the easiest place to go for people to voice their frustration. But again, the moral of the story is communicate. I mean, we're doing our best right now to communicate out what the situation is with bussing and as we do over the summer and sending out letters. So as you said, I think that if there's questions or concerns or trying to get on, come on up to the administration offices. These folks are very easy to talk to. They are not scary people. They don't bite, I promise. So anytime that there's questions, please feel free to, you know, reach out to, you know, the folks here in our wonderful administration. They'll take good care of you. That being said, next on tonight's agenda, under reports, we have school newsletters for September. I always liked the school newsletters, but particularly at the beginning of the school year, they're just so full of, you know, great information. I mean, talking about, you know, pickups and drop-offs and, you know, smooth beginning of schools and schedules and just jam-packed with just good information about stuff that's going on in the schools. Again, like we just mentioned, communication. So when these come home in the backpacks and when these come home, please take a look at them. I know a lot of work goes into putting these together. They're beautifully done, but more importantly, very informative. And we have newsletters from all five of our schools. Eston, Jefferson, Memorial Park, middle school and high school. Any comments about any of the newsletters, guys?
I was just going through like, you know, the, you know, the Sparkland High School, you know, getting the name of the champion school by Special Olympics.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's, you know, those kids are fine. You know, and there's a whole bunch of things, but, you know, good stuff and, yeah.
It really is. It's great. You know, I enjoy, I mean, not just being as a school committee member, but as a parent and a taxpayer, you know, I obviously get my kids, you know, Jefferson School newsletter, but I really enjoy seeing what's going on in the other schools. It's just, I think it's very, very interesting and a benefit to us to be able to see all this, so.
Yeah, and these all go on the website, so, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they can look at these things.
Yep, absolutely.
Meet our teachers too.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of above and beyond going on.
Yeah, right.
Last Friday afternoon, Smith, the Eston School arranged for a cookout over at Springgate after school and teachers and, and, you know, some of our maintenance staff donated their time to bring, to bring grills over and cook. And there's just, there are all kinds of really positive connections going on with the community and I want, we have to keep that going. It makes a difference.
Yeah.
Without a doubt. Well, thank you very much on the newsletters again. And seeing none, nothing under old business. We'll proceed to new business. We're under item B. We have our preliminary enrollment numbers, which I know you did touch on a little bit just now.
Yep.
But I think you're going to talk about some more.
Just, just, you know, kindergarten enrollment is always, is always a question mark. You just never know. I think it's important to point out that we have 60, we're drawing 62 kids in from school choice, which, which is a very good thing. I anticipate the further along the building project goes. I also anticipate some enrollment boosts from that. There could be, it could be, you know, substantial enrollment. But 62 students is about 350,000. 300,000 to the operating budget. It's very, very helpful. It allows us to do a lot of things that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. And I think it's great that kids are choosing Rockland.
And you moved some of the kindergartens around too, didn't you?
We did. We moved two kindergartens to Eston, so Eston saw the return of kindergarten. It's about the best day ever watching those kids come off the bus. It's, it's, I don't know, it's like watching a deer be born or something. They come out and they're like, they got their backpacks and it's just...
I had the chance to talk to some of the folks, the teachers and Ms. Smith over at Eston, and they were all just so excited to have the kindergarten kids there. It just adds a whole new level of cuteness to the school, if you will. Just unbelievable.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah. The only thing that's better is the preschool, preschool by us. It's just those, those kids are adorable.
And while we're on kindergarten, just to point out again, and while we're talking about enrollment, just how fortunate we are in this town to have a kindergarten program like we do. Free.
Free, full day.
You know, aside from the free, free is fantastic, but it's just such a great program. They do, all the teachers are great. The kindergarten is, having now had to go through it very recently, is impressive and it's a gem. We're lucky to have it in this town, for certain.
Yeah. It's getting better all the time.
That was a good move.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. One of many, I think. Up next, under item C, we have a request for approval for an out-of-country trip to Australia and New Zealand. And we have Ms. Walsh here with us tonight. Welcome, Ms. Walsh.
Thank you very much for having me.
Can I volunteer to go with you?
Sure. Mr. Phelps has beat you, I think.
My vote.
Back again. We're approaching 300 students total, having gone abroad with the travel club in the last five years, which I'm really proud of the kids and the families in this town for choosing this to be a priority for them to give their students and children this cultural experience. We chose Australia and New Zealand for 2020, which I know seems really far away, but that's at the point we're at. We're planning three years out so they can save and spend monthly a little bit less than it would be all at once. We chose that because we had such a successful trip to Australia last summer. And we're planning for Japan this summer. And in talking to the kids about what they wanted, this just was the most overwhelmingly popular decision. And we thought changing it and adding New Zealand would be a great addition as well. So we're really excited. I'm going to start signups hopefully later this fall. We have a meeting coming up in a couple weeks. And there are still spots on our Japan trip for this summer for current high school students. And our Europe trip for this year's juniors and sophomores, which would be the April of 2019. And I know it seems crazy to say that this would be possibly for current seventh graders, but they will be ninth graders the year we go. So if there are still spots on the trip, by the time they're at the high school and we get to know them as students in this building, we would be open to filling those spots with ninth graders.
And I know, of course, we're using EF again, which I know I, and I'm sure these guys and everyone else has grown quite comfortable and confident in.
Right.
We've worked very well with them and obviously through some trying experiences in the past, but at least I've found from a distance that they've been very good to work with.
Yeah, as, the longer I work with them, the more faith I put in them, the more I know they can answer every question. They've been really flexible. One of the additions that we did for Australia last year and will be doing for this trip as well, is a special stay behind that they had never done before, where we go to a cattle station and basically live with the family on their working ranch for two nights. And I think it was definitely one of the kids' favorite parts of our trip. And I'm so excited. We're going to be able to go back. And EF went out of their way to help us plan that and make it work for us.
Oh, good.
What would you say is the highlight of this particular trip for you? That you think kids will look forward to the most?
They always love the Great Barrier Reef. That's, I love that that's towards the end of the trip and it's a big buildup. We had several opportunities to snorkel and be in the water before. They went surfing last time we were there. And we did a catamaran cruise around the Whitsunday Islands, which I think that was probably the overall favorite thing. But the reef is just amazing. And they're so lucky to see it the way it is now because as each year goes by, the conditions worsen, but I'm happy they get to see it.
What about the wildlife too? I mean, riding along and see kangaroos, I mean...
Yep, they, they get bored with the kangaroos after about two days. They tell me to stop waking them up on the bus.
See the fruit bats and cons right in the center hanging from the trees?
Yep, the bats. We get to hold a koala, which is something we work in with EF to make sure each kid gets a moment to cuddle a koala. It's a big picture for them. They have several animal encounters, I would say.
Oh, I envy you. I'll make a motion.
Kangaroos are dangerous.
Second half.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thanks for all you do, Ms. Walsh.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh.
Great. Okay, next up, another travel request. We've requested approval, approval for an out-of-state field trip going to the University of New Hampshire from Mr. Piazza in our band.
I can tell you about that a little bit. Just, they had been, they have gone to UMass Band Day for the last number of years at Foxborough Stadium. And they're just mixing it up and going to the UNH version. Wildcat for a day. We have some alum from UNH. It's a very good program. So that's why they're, they're asking to go there. I think it's a great idea.
I think it's great too. You know, anything we can do to keep raising the numbers in the band.
Right.
Certainly the quality has improved drastically, I think. I was at the game Friday night and they sounded awesome. Looked awesome, looked sharp, sounded great.
Pretty and nothing.
Mr. Piazza's doing a great job with them, I think. And I hope the kids are excited about doing this, for sure.
So the total cost is $850.
Just the bus.
Yeah, just the bus. Okay. And the bus stays up there with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, under fundraisers.
Oh, wow.
We have got quite a few, which is awesome. It's great.
Look out, Rockland.
So, let me take a deep breath.
Yeah.
Yeah, look how Rockland is right. But, you know, it, it really is great. It's great to see that we have these fundraisers and that there are those in our schools that are willing to run them and parents and that are willing to take part in our PACs and to take part in enriching our, our kids' educations. And they are incredibly successful as we have come to know since we've started tracking these things over the last few years. But without further ado, the Jefferson School has 13 separate fundraisers that they will will be approving between May and September, including Scholastic Book Fair, Raffle Ice Cream and Social, Little Caesar, Candy Bar Bingo, March Madness Calendar, Special Person Dance, Change Wars, Polar Express Movie Night, Scholastic Book Fair, Halloween Dance, Yankee Candle, The Book-a-thon, and my personal favorite, the night at McDonald's.
I want to go to school there.
What's that?
I want to go to school there.
Yeah, me too, me too, well, I got to go to McDonald's, you can always do that. So we have eight motions, or excuse me, thirteen motions?
Seconds.
All those in favor? Those are thirteen votes. For the high school, we've got eight separate fundraisers, we've got an Yankee Candle Sale, Mixed Bag Designs Savers Drive Fundraiser, Bake Sale, Guatemala Bracelets, Hilliards Chocolate Sale, Gene Day, and a meat raffle.
Eight motions.
Eight seconds.
All those in favor? Aye, thank you. And the Esten School will be having five, they're having a dining for a cause, they're having an ice cream social, an auction basket raffle, Scholastic Book Fair, a Walk-a-thon, and Name the Circle Raffle. Given all the culinary fundraisers, the Walk-a-thon seems to be needed in May, I think I might need that.
Five motions.
Five motions, we have five seconds?
Yes.
And all those in favor? That's a vote. And last but not least, under other, we have a request for the Boy Scouts of America for a car wash that would be utilizing our school's parking lot.
That's two-fifty-seven, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, oh, yeah, it's on the last, yeah, it's two-fifty-seven.
Yep.
Yeah, there's two, there's still two.
Yeah, five-seven.
Fifty-seven, yeah, motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote, thank you very much.
Recycle the paper, should we have a fundraiser by recycling paper?
Yes, absolutely.
Somebody's, somebody's durable.
Next up, we have a request for approval of a maintenance truck. Dr. Crown or Colleen, or?
As you can see, we went out to bid, I had three bidders, Stonem Ford, Corkford, and Liberty Chevrolet. We, we wanted a Ford truck, so Liberty Chevrolet was not a responsive and responsible bidder. So between Corkford and Stonem Ford, Stoneham was the lowest price with the, everything that we had in our maintenance bids, so we recommend Stonem Ford.
Where do you do a service on, on that, do you have to go with a Stoneham or do you do?
They give us a local service person.
They do?
Company, yes.
Okay, okay, good.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote, thank you. Next up, request for approval of Assistant Superintendent's signature on behalf of the superintendent.
So you're going to have to learn how he signs?
Dr. Crown, would you like to talk about the genesis of this real quick?
Just, yeah, just, it's, it's important that. That there's someone else who can sign financial and, and policy documents in my absence, and for that to be, when it comes to budgetary items, it needs the support and vote of the school committee.
Now, this is something that's never been in place before.
No.
How come?
How come it hasn't been in place?
Why do we need it now then? And it's been a hundred years?
Because something came back, it would have been signed on my behalf by the Assistant Superintendent, and, and it was asked if we could make this happen from the school committee side so that Town Hall would be more comfortable from a, from a financial standpoint. So if they're, I think what they're saying is if she's going to sign on my behalf, she want, they want the school committee blessing on that, so that it, so that it has some, so it's based in law that way, although I think she has the authority without it, but.
So what I, what I understand from Mr. Phelps is that we haven't done this, but you have authorized the Assistant Superintendent to sign.
Previous, oh, I think previous superintendents.
I've been signing things for four years.
For four years.
Okay. And was that also the case prior to this?
Prior, yeah, that was.
So it's an ongoing thing, so now we just want to put it in?
No, we just want to, yeah, I think we want to formalize it, I think, spent a lot of time trying to learn more and more and more about, you know, how finance is in the state and local and how everything works, and the, the town accountant has an incredibly complex job, they are responsible for every bill and, and money that comes in and out of the town, and I think having things like this in place just makes, if there is an audit, it just makes things smoother on their end, so I'm happy to cooperate.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it, but I still have a real problem with it, I really do, I don't see any need of it, I don't see any need of it, and then it would tell me that, not that she isn't okay to do it, she could sign anything on behalf of you. To me, a vote here to authorize her, doesn't have to come from anybody else, I don't care who they are, it could be the king or whoever, it doesn't matter, I don't see why after a hundred years we need to do this, that's my feeling.
Would you be more comfortable tableing a further discussion or something?
Yeah.
Especially also where we have two other members.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear from whoever this person is and tell me just why it has, has to be this way.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah, motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so we'll table that. Last, but certainly not least, on tonight's agenda, are public service announcements. Mr. Mills?
Sixteen years ago today, I was driving down twenty-four, just about ready to get on four-ninety-five, heading to Westboro to a client's office, and I looked up at a beautiful clear blue sky and heard on the radio that somebody, a plane had crashed into the World Trade Center, I said, huh, how did that happen? And we found out why it happened and how it happened. And I worked in New York for a lot and I had some friends there, matter of fact, I even got on the phone with one of them, and they were at the MetLife Building, which is that building that's right behind the World Trades, the Grand Central, and they were up on their top floor watching the, because they didn't know what was going on either, and all of a sudden they saw the second plane hit the second building, and they said, we're going to get the hell out of here, basically, and they said something else, but, and I looked at it and I talked to my students today about it, and most of the students, do you remember nine-eleven?
No, I was one at the time.
Right, okay, so most of our students, all of our students, don't know about nine-eleven, they haven't, they didn't experience it, and that's something that I think I reflected on today with my students, because most of them didn't know, you know, had never experienced it, and I asked, and a couple of them said, well, I have parents or grandparents that lived in New York, I said, go back and talk to them about it and how they felt, and look at what happened, and look at also, you know, the, you know, the stories of the firefighters and the police officers that ran into the building while arguing themselves trying to get out, and that's their job, and how many had died doing that job. So just take a moment and think about that and, you know, and think, you know, you know, our police officers and the fire departments and anybody else that's involved in keeping us safe, you know, military and stuff like that, so that's my announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Phelps?
Just other than we're off to a great start for the school year from what I can see and from what I hear from people, the athletics are going extremely well, the football team, and Mr. LaCory, he won his first game by the skin of his teeth, but we'll take a win as a win as a win, and the soccer team, teams are doing well. From what I, I can see, everything is really off, and I encourage people to get out and support these kids, they're working awful hard every day to perform their, you know, during the games, the band, these, these kids working all the time, and it is so much improved over the last couple of years, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, I just got a few things. Oh, yeah, absolutely, that's my first thing.
Okay.
Was to talk about Macy, and to thank, thank Macy for being here with us tonight and going to be here with us on Monday evenings, throughout the, a couple of Monday evenings a month throughout the rest of the school year. And, you know, we want to welcome you and make you feel comfortable to ask every question, and at the conclusion of every meeting like this, I'm going to ask you if you have any announcements or anything that you wanted to ask us, the committee, before we sign off, and if you had any questions about everything that went on here tonight, being your first time.
I don't really have any questions right now.
Okay, well, very good, but in the future, we want you to feel comfortable to ask, okay? Thanks again for being with us here tonight. The other thing is just to touch on actually both things that these, both these gentlemen said, on the rollout of school, like, in my observation, since I've been around watching such things, I, I don't think I've ever noticed such a positive attitude district-wide from not only the faculty and administration, but the kids too. When we had the welcome back for all the employees of the district, every, to a T, every single person that I saw was just talking about how excited they were to get started.